As to what the status of negotiations are, what the issues are, why we're at where we're at, and what the district pays as compared to what it can afford to pay. So it's a certain empirical data. And where we see the next steps in negotiation process being. It's gonna take a little while, I'm gonna move it as fast as I can move it. And at the end, if there is some time, if you can't reach out to us to give anything, I will take a couple of questions. So, yes, they won't, they don't, they trust me to do the bargaining, but they don't trust me with the clicker. So, so I have to work with my partner. So, the Connect Quad Board of Education through its superintendent administration and with me as spokesperson negotiates all the collective bargaining agreements with you. The one that's the subject of tonight is the Teachers Association, obviously the largest unit in this school district. And they have a contract that expired back on June 30, 2001. Now, you may have heard the expression "working without a contract since 2001," uh, 2021, I'm sorry. That is a false statement. The law is that when a contract expires, every single provision in that contract remains in effect, including the provision that has people moved down and across the salary schedule. So the incremental schedule continues to be implemented. So teachers are still working under the contract that although it expired as to its term, pursuant to the statute, remains in effect until today and until such time as a settlement is reached.
Mr. Garcia, can we ask you to put your mic closer to your mouth? The board's having difficulty hearing you.
You need it closer?
Yes.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
I can hear the volume.
Is that, is that okay with everybody now?
Yeah, better.
Okay, it's better? I could probably do this better without it, but we'll see. We'll see. So negotiations for a variety of reasons that are not really relevant here did actually commence with the exchange of proposals until the contract, until September of the, of the same year. Contract technically expired in June, and we met in September and exchanged proposals. Yes. So at the time of the exchange, the, the main item that everybody was looking at from the teacher's standpoint was salary demand. Now, the salary demand that was submitted by the CTA was just under 10% per year. I think technically 9.87. But to make it easier to have this discussion tonight, we rounded up to 10. So the proposal was 2.5% for each year of the contract plus the cost of increment. The cost of increment in Connect Quad is 2.7% a year. What does increment mean? Increment is the movement on the salary schedule from one step to the next based upon years of service. So there's an automatic raise that is built in every year, depending upon what step you move at. Now, that 2.7% does not represent what a teacher gets in, in increment. Because 65% give or take of the teachers are on step, meaning they're moving on the salary schedule. Thirty-some-odd percent of the teachers are not moving on the salary schedule. They're already at the maximum salary, subject to longevity that we're gonna be talking about. So if you're moving on the salary schedule, your raise is a lot more than 2.7. It's offset by those people who are not getting any. But as you'll see, when I show you some charts a little further on, the raises that you get moving on the salary schedule are very substantial before you talk about new money. In addition, the CTA asked for a significant improvement in the longevity. You get to the top of the salary schedule in Connect Quad, when you look at the paper, it's really the bottom. But top step is 20. All of the salary schedules, separate and apart from that, there are four additional longevity plateaus. At the end of 22 years, at the end of 24 years, at the end of 26 years, and at the end of 29 years. Each one of those is $2,500. The union asked to improve all of those longjevities by an additional $1,250, costing us in total another half a percent of payroll. Now, everybody likes to talk in percentages. But in order to really understand the significance of this, you need to know what payroll is. Payroll is $66 million, give or take. 1% of that is $660,000. So when you take the cost of 2.5% plus 2.7% in increment, plus a half a percent in longevity, you get a number that approaches 5% times 660,000. So that's the number that became at issue in the very first session of bargaining. So a bunch of additional proposals were made by both sides. I'm gonna talk about each one of them in, in connection with this matter. But you can see that both the board and the CTA were looking to make contractual changes, which we'll talk about additionally. As per the usual practice, and I say that because, I hate to admit this, but this is my 50th year of doing this. So I am in a position to say what's typical, just by longevity, so to speak. Boards of education don't make an, an initial salary proposal. They wait to see the teacher's proposal, then the board meets, does its usual responses, and then comes up with a proposal. We did not, as a result, make a proposal, salary proposal on the first session. These are the numbers that I was alluding to in connection with the cost of the teacher settlement. Over a course of a four-year period, payroll would go up in excess of $14 million if the board approved that initial settlement of the teachers. Yes? Go to the next one. So the second bargaining session happened in December 15. And at that time, the board made an initial salary proposal. And that proposal was 0.75% plus increment. Remember, increment 2.7. So we knew that these numbers were gonna go up by in excess of 3% by virtue of the board's initial proposal. At that proposal, or at that session, the board's proposal was rejected. And frankly, to our surprise a little bit, there was no counterproposal. And we were informed in no uncertain terms that the, that the CTA would not move off its position with regard to numbers unless the board unilaterally upped its offer. Well, the Board of Education wasn't gonna do that. So as a result, the board determined that direct negotiations with these parties without some outside help was not gonna work. So what the board did was declare impasse. Now let me quickly tell you what that means. In the state of New York, public sector unions are not allowed to strike. With the result that there is a process in place that provides for a safety valve. And that safety valve is that if impasse can be declared, meaning that the parties don't look like they're going to be able to make a deal, it can't be determined by either side, unilaterally or jointly. And when that happens, a mediator is appointed. So we talked to the CTA leadership and said, "This is, obviously isn't going anywhere because we're not gonna be bargaining against ourselves. So let's talk about a joint declaration of impasse." That was rejected. So we said, "We're going to make any unilateral application then. Let's talk about a mutual agreement as to the appointment of a mediator. This way we can get a man and a woman that we all fit both comfortable with. Let's talk about that." That was rejected as well. And consequently, a mediator was appointed with no input from either side. Perd made that decision as the Public Employment Relations Board, the arm of the state of New York that is involved in this process. Yes? So at the first mediation session, the CTA did make a change in its salary proposal, notwithstanding what they had said before we went to impasse. And it was reduced to 1.5, stay with your order. That's it. 1.5, 1.75, 1.5, and 1.75, again, plus the cost of increment. In addition, as you'll see, we'll be talking about health insurance in a little while. Teachers in Connect Quad pay 15% of the cost of premium. We have been asking for 20%, which we believe to be the going rate out there. And the CTA offered to go to 16% in the last year of the deal. Yes? Now, remember I told you about longevity? You can see in the bottom line of the chart that this is the increased cost of the longevity. Just under a half, essentially a half, more than a half, three-quarters of a point. That's added to the salary demand and added to the cost of increment, keeping those numbers above four. Yes? I already told you about the 1%. All other board proposals were rejected. Yes? So the board at that mediation session decided to increase its offer in an effort to make a settlement. And that is the four-year proposal that you see there. 1% for each of the first three years, again, plus increment. So those numbers actually represent, sorry, represent 3.7, 3.7, 3.7, and 3.5, give or take. Plus, we, we continue to request the 20% health insurance. At the second mediation session, the board made a decision with regard to health insurance. And that was to reduce its proposal to 18% of the cost of premium paid by the employee instead of 20, with new employees paying 20. The significance of, keep that 18% in mind because when you see some statistics in a little while, you'll see how important that is. So 18% for actives, current actives, and 20% for the as-yet-unhired. The union's salary proposal remained unchanged, but they did ask for a fifth year of the deal. A, a situation which we're not unalterably opposed because we're in the middle of year two right now. So as this process plays itself out, we'll see whether it'll be a four-year deal as both the parties originally anticipated, or whether it ends up at five. But the, you can see that the numbers then now on the teacher's side, base salary averaged, averaged out to 1.5. And they, by ending a fifth year, they put another half a point on the health insurance, making the contribution in the last year of the deal 16.5%. Yes? Another proposal on the table from the board is the health insurance buyback. In Connect Quad, as in many school districts, a teacher has the, the option to say, "I don't want health insurance." Usually because the spouse is getting it through another district. And we pay essentially, right now, the highest buyback of any school district around in that we pay 50% of the district's cost of the premium. So that, believe it or not, family health insurance, I think, is around $33,000 now. And going up, Bob is saying, and going up. So $33,000, we currently pay 85% of that. Half of that 85%, you just get the check around $12, $13,000. So what we're looking, the, the numbers are extraordinary because a lot of teachers have spouses who are in the night shift system in schools or other state agencies. And consequently, if you, if we make those payments, they add up to hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we made a proposal to change the health insurance buyback to reflect what's more common out there. And that is 5%, $5,000 for a person taking family coverage, $2,500 for a person who rejects individual coverage. The, the union made a proposal or responded saying, "We don't want any change for anybody who's currently working here. But for the new employees, $7,500 for the family and $6,000 for the individual." Yes? I think you went the other way, yes? Well, gimme a, yeah, one more. There we go. Now we had the third longevity, the third mediation session. And in that mediation session, the board agreed to increase its year four offer. Remember, that number was 0.75, to increase it to 1.0. So that's the current position of the school board. Again, the union would, did not respond to that number and did not make, did not make a counteroffer with regard to any of the board items. So the end result of that mediation session, one more, yes? Okay. At the end of that mediation session, which was the third one authorized by the statute, the board determined to go to the next step in the impasse procedure. That next step is called fact-finding. And fact-finding is instead of us working with someone who's a neutral who tries to make a deal, now we each make a presentation. And the one we're going to make is similar to the one that you see tonight. The union makes one as well. And the end result is the fact-finder will make a ruling that's a recommendation. It's not binding on the parties, but it strongly influences the parties as to what a state-appointed neutral believes the settlement should be, as to all the outstanding items. As to fact-finding, where we are right now is to date, as of tonight, the only days that the union has indicated its availability are in April. We have told the fact-finder that we are available two dates of the three that he gave us in February. We're waiting to hear from the CTA as to whether they will agree to any of those dates in February. Okay, so the final salary proposal, the final salary proposals are the way they were at the last mediation session. Notice that the union has the fifth year item. Yes? Okay, now, I wanna do this quickly. There's about 25 or 30 pages of data that supports this slide. The state of New York publishes a variety of indicia of a school district's ability to pay. There are certain formulas that have to do with the wealth of the district, the amount of money behind each pew boat, the property value, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not gonna bore you with those details. But they, they all have acronyms that are set forth up there. And they all tell us the same thing. And that is, as a result of an analysis of all the different approaches to determine a district's ability to pay its employees, Connect Quad is either in the middle or below. So you're either around the 50th percent or below the 50th percent down, meaning that your ability to pay the same raises that are, or salaries that are received by wealthier districts is difficult. The reason that's important is because what a fact-finder does is make a recommendation that includes a variety of factors, or addresses a variety of factors. Not just what everybody's paying, but what can each individual district afford. So that, for example, you can imagine that Great Nick pays more than you do. There's a reason for that. And a fact-finder takes that, that reason is important to a fact-finder when that fact-finder says, "Well, if Great Nick just gave a 1.5% raise, maybe Connect Quad can't." That's what fact-finding is all about. So, did you go to the front, yes? Can you go back one? Yeah, you did. Go ahead, advance. So you have a variety of factors go into your revenue stream. Of course, the first is your tax levy. But all of you who are residents here pay in property taxes, going to school tax. The balance comes from aid, that is, either from the federal government or the state government, and a few dollars here and there from miscellaneous sources. So your revenue stream is a very important consideration, both to the fact-finder and to your school board. So one of the things that we received here is a big... is a big shot of federal money during the course of COVID. And we here across the bargaining table, you've got millions of dollars in federal aid. Well, our response to that is twofold. First of all, that money didn't get spent. It got spent, and it didn't get spent on salary increases. It got spent on staff size because program had to be implemented in order to address the issues that arose out of virtual instruction. That leads to the second issue with regard to that. And that is that next year, that federal aid dries up. The problem is that the issues that are addressed by that federal aid, they didn't go away, and they're not going to go away. So the programs, the extra staff members, et cetera, that were hired, they hang it out and have to be paid, even though the federal money doesn't exist. So that's our response to the issue about what about the $8 million that you got in federal aid? Next, Jess. Property tax cap, the next factor that has to be considered. I'm sure everybody is aware of the fact that for several years now, there has been a limit on the number of dollars that your tax levy can go up. Now, what is the tax levy? Because a lot of people confuse the levy with budget. The tax levy is the portion of your total expenses that are paid for by your local taxpayers. So there's X number of millions of dollars that are raised in 2020, 21. That number can only go up by 2% or the cost of living, whichever is less. And in many years here, before the economy went in the toilet, that levy cap was lower. At one point in time, a couple of years ago, it was only 1.14. So your levy had to be essentially flat. So now, because of inflation, the number is 2%. You can't send a budget to your population that raises that tax levy above 2% unless you get a supermajority. And I'm sure you all know, nobody does that. Because with the exception of a couple of very small, rich districts, the reality is that a public will not support a tax levy increase above the cap. Nobody's getting that supermajority, and so nobody even tries. Even places where the budget goes down the first time that they do try it, the next time they go back to the public, it's with the levy cap at 2%. So you're going to see in a few minutes what that levy is as it compares to what are the expenses that are being asked for from the CTA. Yes. Okay, so this, actually, it's sooner than I thought. So this is a calculation provided to us by the district, which is really an incredible job because it shows you what the levy increase is permitted to be. And it compares the levy increase with the amount of money being asked for by the CTA in its package proposal. And as you can see, look at the next to the last column. In '22, it's '21, '22 really, the proposal consumes 50% of the total levy. In '22, '23, 84%. In the next year, 76%. And in '24, '25, over 100% of the total levy. In other words, if you gave the CTA the proposals that they're asking for as of today, there would be less than zero money left over for any other bargaining unit, for any other expenses, for fuel, oil, for you name it. That simply is a non-starter in connection with any organization. It's impossible. Next. Stating, that's the other thing that when you're sitting across the bargaining table, you're just saying, "But don't forget, in addition to your levy, you've got state aid." Well, a lot of school districts got a lot of state aid increases. Not new guys. They got a few hundred thousand bucks. So that money essentially is a drop in the bucket as compared to the money that you would need to fund all your other expenses. So state aid increases are not a factor in this round of bargaining. Okay, health insurance costs. I want to see if you can go forward, make this move a little faster, Jess. Move to the chart. No. Okay, I guess you're going to have to go back. I'm sorry. Go back. Advance one now. Okay, so this is what we spend in health insurance premiums in Connect Quad. You see that number, total expenditures? $21,000. That's the increase from the 21 to the 19 million, 21 billion, I'm sorry. 21 billion from the 19 billion the year before. The reality is the last two years, health insurance, what am I thinking, 12 and 13? 12 and 13, or 12 and 14? The increases of the last two years are over 25%. And, next one. And that's why we are attempting to lower the rate of our increased expenditures. We're not looking to decrease them, but by having the teachers contribute a little more, we slow down the rate of our cost increase. The next item, again, remember what I told you? The reality is that the whole tax levy cap can be consumed by the teacher proposals. This is another hidden cost because retirement contributions, when the stock market hits the skids, what happens? The TRS, the Teachers Retirement System, and ERS, the Arrested Employees, then those systems lose money. And because the pensions for teachers are constitutionally guaranteed, it means that the legislature can't even change the benefit. So when the retirement system loses $2 billion as a result of stock market losses, it simply sends a bill to all the components to say, "Hey, we lost a billion. Your share of it is X. Got to pay up." So you can see that expenditures are going up by double digits for pensions with no end in sight because everybody is saying that we're on the verge of a recession or certainly the stock market isn't going to take off. So those bills are going to keep increasing over the course of the life of this country. Yes. Okay, so I told you before about 2/3, so it's 63.5% of the teachers are moving on the salary schedule. I just want to show you. Move away from the V. I. Go on to the next one. There. I just want to show you a couple of examples of what happens when you're moving on the salary schedule. So in year one of this deal, a teacher at MA5 is making $72,362. In year two of the deal, at the board's proposal of 1% plus increment, that person moves to $75,000. At year three of the deal, that person moves to $79,000. At year four '82, and year, pardon me, year four '86. So that person, in the four years of this deal, got a 20% raise. See that? 19.65%. That's the impact of moving straight down the salary schedule. That doesn't even take into consideration moving across the salary schedules by virtue of advanced education that people take. And I'll show you one of those. Let's move to another. Okay, so I'll just do this one more. This is an example of what happens when somebody moves over a step, I mean a lane. So this person starts at $88,000, moves to $92,000, to $98,000, to $102,000, to $106,000. So within the four years of the deal, from $88,000 to $106,000, 20% salary increase. Those increases are experienced by essentially 2/3 of the staff. When we're talking about 1% plus increment, that's what it really means insofar as delivering hard dollars. I think we can skip over the rest of these in the interest of times, Jess. Keep going. You can see in this PowerPoint. Well, let's stop here a second. Here's one where a person actually moves from MA30 to MA60. That's 30 more credits, post-masters degree. So you move one lane over. This person in four years gets a 27.1% salary increase. So those numbers between 20 and 30% of salary increase are being enjoyed by 2/3 of your staff. Keep going, Jess. Hold on. So it's fair to ask, "Well, what about the 1/3 of the staff that is at the top step, at step 20?" Well, they're not left behind because there are four longevity plateaus after '22, '24, '26, and '29. Even under the current system, that's another $10,000. So you hit the top step of the salary schedule, you hang around for 29 years, you're from the 29, from 20 to 29, on top of that top step, and whatever the raises are during the course of those years, you also get another $10,000. So the impact of all of this is really substantial. Okay, I think I've exhausted this concept. Let me move on, Jess. Okay, so the next thing that we look at is salary rankings. Well, where do you guys pay? Remember what I said earlier that if you look at all the ability-to-pay numbers, you're either at the middle or you're below the middle. So what is the, how does the salary schedule compare in that same concept? How does it compare to your ability to pay? Well, it's very interesting. If you look at the numbers, they are, your starting salaries are relatively low. They're in the bottom third. But the minute you hit step six, you're moving above the middle to the 60th and 70th, 70th, 75th, 89th percentile, 82nd percentile, in the 60s. In other words, you're consistently in the top half once you've been here six years, notwithstanding the fact that your ability to pay is in the bottom half. Now, there is one place where it drops off. It drops off at the top step. But what that chart does not show is that's where the longevities kick in. And when the longevities kick in, they kick you right back up into the top half of the comparison study. So the summation of that is, you can afford to pay in the lower half, but you actually pay in the top half. Health insurance. Remember I told you, current employees, 18%. New employees, 20. Move to the chart. There we go. So we actually got a hold of every single contract in Suffolk County to see what is paid. And we averaged out all those numbers. They average out to 81.5%. That's the average contribution that school districts in Suffolk County make to the cost of health insurance premium. That drives us to ask for 82. So the employee would ask for, would pay 18% instead of the 20 that we ask for. You can move. The declination. Move to the chart. Okay. So we looked at all the places that have a declination of health insurance. And we found that there is no district that pays a better benefit than Connect Quad. There are more than one that pay what we pay, but the typical settlement is much lower. In fact, what we've looked at is our board proposal with regard to health insurance buyback still keeps us in the upper echelon of districts who pay for people who decline coverage. Keep going. All right, I already went through longevity. Keep going. We did the longevity comparison as well. And in longevity, our current longevity payments are among the highest already. And I need to point something out here because when we looked at the salary comparisons, more than half the school districts in Suffolk County put the longevities on the schedule. So that's why when you got to the bottom quartile there of the highest-paid people, our comparison is a little less because in those, in the majority of school districts, the longevity is in the schedule. So the top step set forth on the schedule is higher than the top step we pay. When you add our $10,000 to it, which is not on the schedule, that changes everything. Okay, getting toward the end here. Bunch of other proposals on the table. I'll do them as quickly as I can. Probably the most significant of them is to teacher leave provision. I'm sure everybody is familiar with the concept that you get 10, 12, 15 sick days a year. And depending on the contract, those days can be used for personal illness, for illness in the family, and for a couple of other reasons, all related to sickness. We have looked at every contract in Suffolk County. And as far as we can see, there's only one school district that essentially allows all those leave days to be for any reason. Connect Quad. There are essentially 14, 15 personal days, wellness days. You can take off. We want to change that. We want a provision that looks like what everybody else is provisioned, that you get a certain flat number of sick days that you use, and you actually have to be sick or somebody in your family has to be sick or something like that in order for you to be away from school. Jess? Here's another one. Everybody knows the concept of probation and tenure. Probationary periods were historically three years. During that period of time, a board can analyze somebody's performance and simply say, "Little bit, you're doing the job." At the end of that three years, you get tenure, assuming you do get tenure. And from that point on, terminating your employment is difficult and costly. And the only one who makes any money is guys like me. So that's what the difference of probation and tenure is. Supposed to do your job as well as you can during a period of probation. And the state of New York, notwithstanding its liberal bent, actually extended the probationary period to four years several years ago. Now, Connect Quad is the only school district that we can find in Suffolk County that only has a probationary period of two years. After two years, you are entitled to a just cause hearing. That's tenure. You can only fire a person for cause. It's just tenure by another word. So a couple of years ago, believe it or not, historically, it was only one year of probation year. In either the last round or the round before, we managed to get it to two years. Then the probationary period gets extended to four years. And all we're saying is that we want the probationary period to be three years in Connect Quad. We're not even asking for the full four. But we want to be able to analyze a teacher's performance where they don't get But we want to be able to analyze a teacher's performance where they don't get instant tenure in their couple of years. This last, I think this is the last one, if I'm not mistaken. No, Jessie's telling me no. This is a pretty simple one. We've gone to an electronic program here that still has a paper component with regard to student records and student performance. And it still requires teachers to sign a piece of paper. And all we're asking for here is, no, we've got an electronic program here, we want signatures to be electronic as well. Yeah, this is the last board item, if I'm not mistaken. I don't want to be wrong twice in a row. In the modern era, school districts all over Long Island are insisting that there be an official website, an email address, where parents can communicate with teachers. And there are limitations on how that is used, but it's, the whole objective is to encourage teachers to be able to respond to legitimate, not crazy, questions from parents, and also within a reasonable time limit. Right now, CTA is refusing to do that. They do not want to give teachers email addresses to parents. We think that is out of the ordinary in connection with what's going on in Long Island right now and all over the country. So, that proposal remains on the table. Okay. That's the end of the board proposals. What's left with regard to the union proposals is changing the retirement incentive. We can go through this quickly. We've already looked at the retirement incentive language. They want to make it more generous. The reality is that we already pay among the most generous retirement incentives on Long Island, so there is, simply isn't any money there to increase that benefit more. Doctoral stipend. We currently have a doctoral stipend, which is pretty typical on Long Island, at five hundred dollars. The CTA is, as you can see, is looking to, and I think the number is thirty-five hundred, if I'm not mistaken. One moment. Yes, thirty-five hundred dollars. You know, that's five hundred percent increase. That's it. So, that is the full nature, that's all the proposals that are significant, that are out there for bargaining. We're waiting to find out what the Fact Finder is going to do. First, we're waiting to hear from the CTA as to what days they're available. We will be making a fact-finding presentation, and then we'll wait for the award, and the board will undertake its obligation. Both sides have an obligation to respond to the Fact Finder within five days of its publication. When it is issued, it will become public document for everyone to read. Thank you, folks, and I'll entertain some questions if you have. I think I'm probably going to hold on to you for a little while. Yes?
Hi, so you work for the Board of Education.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
You work for the Board of Education?
I do.
So, is the CTA going to get a chance to respond in a format like this to the community or just the Board of Education?
It's not a matter, we have absolutely no control over what the CTA does or when.
Are they going to be allowed the opportunity to present here?
We're not in a position to deny them the opportunity. They don't need our permission.
I guess it's actually probably more of a question for the board then?
I'm sorry?
Probably more of a question for the board than for the lawyer, I'm imagining.
No, no, I don't think I'm making myself clear. The CTA can make an announcement anytime it wants, that we are going to make a presentation similar to the one that Mercy will make. And they'll make arrangements for it to do that. I've seen this many times over my career, it's often done at the public library. They can do whatever it is they want. They were actually even free to attend here tonight. I frankly don't think it's an accident that the teachers' union is not here to see that presentation. And I do not know to what extent the union has informed even its own members as to the issues. I just don't know that. But they can certainly, anytime they want, make whatever presentations they want. They're not dependent on us in any way for that.
And I think you're not understanding me. I'm saying, are they going to be giving the opportunity to speak at a Board of Ed meeting, not in the library, someplace where it's filmed?
Well, they could have come here tonight. They could have come here tonight, and if you've been at board meetings, you know that there are several meetings where there are two hundred teachers in the room. Please, no volume. I believe, I can't say this for certain, but I believe that the total absence of the CTA from the union tonight is intentional, not an accident. Yes, ma'am?
Well, two questions now. Would they have been given?
Can you please speak up? I can actually.
Would they have been given the same amount of time or just three minutes because they came?
No, no. The board would not entertain the CTA making its presentation.
So, no, it would not have the same opportunity?
No, that would not happen. This is a meeting of the board. The CTA is an independent organization that can make whatever arrangements it wants at one's own time in order to make whatever presentation it wants.
My other question is, how does this help us understand all of the other contracts not settled? Clerical, I believe, TA, and admin?
I don't think I can give you a definitive answer in that regard. Let me give you an experience instead, because I'm not in a position to comment on what's going on here with the other units. But it is not uncommon, in my experience, for other units to sort of stand back and wait to see what happens in the teacher deal. I'm not saying that's happening here because I don't really know, but that's more common than not.
Okay, but our only problems are not the CTA?
I didn't hear that, sorry.
The only problems with contracts in this district are not the CTA?
Well, I don't think, I'm not even calling the negotiations with the CTA a problem. We just have a difficult time addressing the different points of view that we have. The CTA wants the best settlement he can possibly get for its members. That's what they're entitled to do. The school board, on the other hand, has to balance those needs as against its ability to come up with the cash. And so far, there just hasn't been a meeting of the minds in that regard. Look, at a lot of board meetings, you see, you know, some aggressive behavior on both sides and some animosities, but those, I don't address those issues. What I do for a living is this kind of bargaining, and when you get at the bargaining table, that stuff stays outside. Inside, you're doing the, addressing the hard issues of what can we pay versus what do you want? And ultimately, it always gives way down. Oh, yes?
I just want to clarify, because I think I understand what you're trying to say. So, regardless of whether or not the CTA gave a presentation, I don't know what their wants and needs were, the reality is, what you gave us tonight was the actual data regarding what the district can afford to pay for, what we are currently paying for, and the projections of what we will have to pay for in order to be, one, physically responsible, and, two, actually be able to pay for the goods and services that we're providing, which would be the contracts and the children. So, that is correct. So, regardless of whether anyone gave another presentation of what their wants for, because that's a negotiation, that's not really data that doesn't want and need, which are valued, but you are providing us with the actual data, which doesn't change your.
Exactly. My entire intention, as directed by the school board, was not to take a partisan position, but to simply point out the impact of the numbers, what they do to budgets, what they do to tax levy, et cetera. Those numbers, they don't lie. Everybody knows what health insurance costs, and so on and so forth. So, the real issue is, how do you fit the needs and desires of all the employee unions under the tax levy cap? It's as simple as that. Yes, ma'am?
Your decades of working at negotiating school district contracts, how often do you have people who already have something and have been getting it for years, and you want to take it away, and they actually get it?
That's a great question. The answer is surprisingly very common. Since the tax levy cap has been in effect, bargaining has taken a pretty typical approach. On the one side of the ledger, what's the salary increase? On the other side of the ledger, what's the school board get back in exchange for that money? That is a subject of ninety-five percent of the paid places every time. So, the old-fashioned word is give backs, but that's the reality. Benefits aren't improving, working conditions aren't improving. Salaries are improving, but control issues, working condition issues, benefit issues, those are tightening in response because the levy cap has done something that never existed before. I started doing this in nineteen seventy-three, and in those days, if you had to come up with an extra point, two points, and in those days, even five points, you had a couple of things going through. Number one, staff size was shrinking. So, if you used to have five hundred teachers, and now you had four hundred and fifty teachers, you had in your budget, budget, the money for five hundred. So, salaries went from when I started, seven thousand dollars a year at BA, to sixty thousand at BA now, because you always had that slush fund as districts went from twenty thousand to ten thousand kids, some places from ten thousand to three thousand. When that stopped, the double-digit increases, eight percent, seven percent, and plus increment, that stopped. But once the tax levy cap came into effect, all of a sudden, you had a private sector model. You know, I use a phrase that's sort of a joke but serious. There's two different kinds of bargaining. I have the money, but I don't want to give it to you, and I don't have the money. Historically, it was only the former in school districts because you could always raise the tax, another dime, another fifteen cent, whatever, and the public would tolerate it. The tax levy cap puts a solid roof on what you can pay unless you want to try to get the supermajority. So, all of a sudden, you're having bargaining like this one, where you say, "The numbers show, insofar as your proposal is concerned, I don't have the money, whether I want to give it to you or not. So, what do I get in return? If I give you a one-point-five percent raise, hey, you give me back three points worth of health insurance. It sort of limits the impact of my cost increase." That's the way bargaining happens all over today. Yes, ma'am?
You know, I think it would be very helpful if the teacher's contract could be put in comparison to other districts like Sageme, Sable, Smithtown, and Comac, because I think the numbers that are going to be very different and not even Connect Quat's favorite.
Well, I've done a lot of research about this, as all my people, and if you take Comac, a very rich place, and take it out of that mix, and you, if you look at all the sixty-some-odd districts, those are the numbers that are set forth up there. Insofar as the provisions we're talking about, I know you were here during the whole presentation, so you know, you heard me say, as to several of these provisions, you're alone, nobody else has anything like that. So, I don't know what else is said about that, but one thing that will happen is our brief, when we present our brief to the Fact Finder, it should be much more extensive than this PowerPoint. The numbers will be the numbers. They all come out of data provided by the districts, so there's no secrets. Okay, I think I'll take one more. Everybody good? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your courtesy as well.
Thank you, Brandon. Next up, we have the budget presentation by Mr. Hauser, fiscal stress and revenue.
Good evening. This is the second budget presentation. What we're going to speak about tonight, and it's going to be hopefully a fairly brief presentation. Number one, we're going to speak about fiscal stress, in particular, the New York State Office of the State Controller assigns a score to each school district, and that is commonly known as the fiscal stress score. The second thing we're going to speak about is the tax cap. And then the third thing, we will speak about revenues to support the budget. So, fiscal stress, like I said, each year, the New York State Controller's Office gathers data on individual school districts, and the, on the left side of the screen, are the four pieces of data that they look at for a fiscal stress score. One of them is the school district's year-end fund balance. The second is if there are any operating deficits. The third would be the amount of cash that a school district has on hand at the end of a school year. And then the fourth thing would be the reliance on short-term cash flow debt. That's typically referred to as tax anticipation notes. The Controller's Office has yet to release the two thousand twenty-two school year results. We hope those results come out shortly, we're led to believe that. So, this slide really here is just a snapshot of the most recent data, which is from two thousand twenty-one. And at the bottom right-hand corner, I circled what our score is, which is a six-point-six-seven. In the far corner, the right corner of the screen, you can see, if a district scored between sixty-five and a hundred, they would have significant financial stress. If they scored between a forty and sixty-four point nine, they would have moderate fiscal stress. If they scored between twenty-five and forty-four point nine, they would be susceptible to fiscal stress. And anything in the zero to twenty-four point nine is what's called a no designation by the Controller's Office. So, we have a score of six-point-six-seven, which is no designation. So, we are in fairly good shape when it comes time to fiscal stress. But I do emphasize, this data is well over a year old from the two thousand twenty-twenty-one school year. So, once we get the data from the most recent school year that closed, we can update this slide. Okay, the governor typically comes out with their executive budget proposal as to how much state aid each school district should receive. And then usually, by the end of March, the New York State Legislature will vote on the final state aid numbers. Unfortunately, as of today, the governor has not provided us with our state aid proposal for the two thousand twenty-two, oh, sorry, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So, once again, we have some historical data up here. I was told today, I wasn't able to verify this information, but as a new governor, Governor Hochul has an additional two weeks to provide the state aid information to us. So, hopefully, by the end of January or shortly thereafter, we should have a proposal from the governor as to what our state aid is. So, these are the different line items here that make up our state aid, everything from foundation aid, services aid, high-cost excess aids, which could be, aid which could be for students who are classified, to private excess cost aid, universal pre-K, and building aid on our construction projects. It also takes into consideration the STAR, the school tax. It also takes into consideration the STAR, the school tax relief payments. And then further down towards the bottom, in the last year, roughly a year ago, the state aid report had an adjustment for any of those federal COVID monies. So as you can see, a year ago, at the very bottom here, our state aid in its entirety only went up, actually went down 1.33%. So we don't know what that number is going to be like for the 2023-24 school year, but we will be able to provide updated slides once we get that information. Okay, as Mr. Gercio mentioned in his presentation, we do operate under the tax cap. I believe this is the 13th year in a row for the New York State tax cap. It's typically referred to as the 2% tax cap. And there are two factors here. One of them is what's called the tax base growth factor, which is 1.0037, a very small increase for the 23-24 school year. In summary, that really reflects the increase in assessed values within a district. The next number is what's called the allowable levy growth factor. And that's typically that rate of inflation, the Consumer Price Index, or 2%, whichever one is less. We know inflation has been significantly higher than 2%. So we're expecting the Controller's Office to come out shortly and officially say that that allowable levy growth factor will be 2% for the 23-24 school year. The third item down here that affects our tax cap and our tax levy limit are payments in lieu of taxes, which are often referred to as pilot payments. In the town of Islip, there's an industrial development agency that typically reviews applications from businesses that either want to move into the town of Islip and employ certain numbers of people. And in exchange, instead of paying real estate taxes, commercial real estate taxes, they would make a payment in lieu of taxes to the school district. The fourth item here is what's called the capital exclusion. So we are allowed to take a look at our debt, our building aid, transportation, bus purchases, different aid amounts for transportation, and different ways of looking at our debt to come up with another exclusion amount to that tax cap. And then the final item is if there are any available carryovers from the prior year, which for 2023-24, there are not. So these are the factors that go into us determining the tax gap. Each year, we have to perform a tax levy limit calculation. And our projection here, we're thinking it's going to be about 2.3%, 2.32%, somewhere in that range. We work with the Controller's Office to actually come up with what the calculation is going to be. So at the top of this slide, for the current school year, I have prior year tax levy, but it's really the current school year. We collect $134,875,000 from the residents of this school district and also the commercial tax base to operate the school. There's a formula here that I'm about to go through quickly that takes into consideration that tax base growth factor, any of those pilot payments we received, which are those payments in lieu of taxes, any exemptions that we were granted. And then we multiply that by what that allowable levy growth factor, which we believe, it's unofficial yet, is going to be 2%. Then we deduct prior year pilot payments, the carryover, which I said was zero. And then we also take a look at what's called the capital levy share. So this is a pretty complicated formula that we have to go through, but it's all verified and actually up on the Controller's website. So we anticipate that this year, for 2023-24, we will be able to raise approximately up to a maximum of $138,92,671. That's a little over a $3 million increase, or roughly at 2.38%. But like I said, these are projected numbers, and we won't know them for sure until the governor comes out with the state aid proposal in particular. This is just a snapshot of our 2021, the prior school year that ended last July, as well as the current school year that we're in right now. And these are all the sources of revenue that we use to actually support the school district budget. So we have up at the top there our appropriated fund balance. We have miscellaneous revenues. We have several different reserves. One of them is the worker compensation reserve for any employees that are actually injured on the job. We have an employee benefit reserve, which would be employees of the district and their accrued sick time. We have a teachers' retirement reserve, TRS. We have an unemployment reserve. We are self-insured for unemployment claims. So if an employee were to leave the district and be awarded unemployment, we have to pay for that dollar for dollar. We no longer have a debt service fund. I spoke about the state aid, which is still unknown, but you can see the two numbers from the prior years. And then it subtotals up to about $72,545,000 for the current school year. Add to that the amount of money that we raise from the taxpayers of the Konekwa School District. That's that $134,875. And last year, we only raised those taxes from the community 1.99%. And all total, for the current school year, we raised $207,420,876. And that amount equals the actual school budget. And here's just a calendar to give you an idea of where we are in the budget cycle. So the next presentation we will be making, which is February 7th, we will be speaking about staffing, instructional programs within the district, and we will also be speaking about the enrollment in the district. Next slide. So that ends the presentation. Are there any questions, comments, concerns, suggestions from the board? Okay, this presentation will be posted on the district's website within 24 hours. I listed my contact information at the bottom. If anyone has any questions, feel free to email me, and I'll respond accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And thank you for the presentation, helping with the fact finding. Great slides. Moving on, let's see, to our next discussion item, which is board topics. I believe I may have put all these on. Anybody else put any of these on here? I'm going to have you guys jump in if you like. Food service issues. So we've seen a lot of different things, seen a lot of emails, been spoken to by a lot of parents. We visited the schools ourselves. We've had our own situation with some of the food quality. Here is the thing. We need to have better choices, more chef days, and better quality food. I know that I'm becoming like a broken record, and I specifically have brought this up at numerous meetings, and it's almost nauseating. But I just feel like regardless if we are spending a ton of money and we are dead, what good is it to be spending all of this money if the kids are not even eating the food? If they were at least eating the food and enjoying the food, I would be okay with the fact that we need to move some money from reserves. We have to do what we have to do. You know, that's part of unfortunately being a district where we do have, you know, some people that are struggling. We have to do what we have to do to make sure that kids are being fed. Some children, this is their only meal. Some kids that, in the summer, we worry about these kids being fed because when they go to school, they get fed. No kid goes hungry. But I keep hearing from so many parents that kids go hungry. Then I had seen on a social media site that there was, which I've said to people. And that's one of the other next issues. I'm going to actually morph them into each other. A social media abuse. I wish that Greg was still here because he could tell everybody in the audience. Social media is a Facebook platform, let's say, or Instagram, whatever platform you use. Twitter, I know it's one of the things I don't use. Many people use these platforms, and more power to you. But school board members, unless they are on there with an official site, which we have been told by legal on countless times that that is not how a school board member would do things. Because A, you have no authority or power to make any decisions for a district at all without being in a quorum, without a majority. That's first. Second, school board members do not have to show what they write on a social media site such as Facebook. I myself have a private Facebook. I have sat here where I am right now and actually had people sending me private messages that were threats during a meeting from the audience. Some may even be here. I don't know. Like I said, I don't know who's who, but I can tell you this. At which time, police did tell me, and told actually us, that those people ought to be blocked, as I already know. That is the first step in stopping any kind of harassment, aggravated harassment, or any sort of bullying on social media. That is the first thing I would tell a parent, a student. Block a person. If they get around it by somehow finding you, then that's something that needs to be reported. Many times, people tend to send the school board these emails, and we're receiving them, that make absolutely no sense coming to a school board. The school board is not the police department. You send an email to the school board about a school board family member or relative. That is not for the school board to police. We are policy people. We go over policy, we go over budget. We are not the police department. Okay, I know this very well because I deal with this at work. We are not police. We are school board trustees. That means when we clock out, you send emails to the school board. You can send emails to the superintendent at any time. You are not blocked by official business. But you do not, and I do mean this, no one has the right to harass. And that is what it is, just so everyone knows, on social media. It's harassment, and it actually is elevated to the level of aggravated harassment, especially during a school board meeting while we're sitting in our official position and getting death threats. That is horrible. And anyone who thinks that that doesn't happen, I did write on social media, for those who can see it, I did write that you are more than welcome to make an appointment with me because I will gladly meet with anybody one-on-one at a Starbucks, a Dunkin' Donuts, or your choice as a community member, as a taxpayer, as a parent. And I will gladly show you some of these wonderful messages that, without the person's name, of course. But just so we all understand, social media is for you to speak to other parents. We have this wonderful thing, where the superintendent and the administrators have done a wonderful job making sure there's transparency by putting a Konekwa Central School District site. We have been blessed with wonderful administrators from school buildings that have social media pages if you choose to be on them. But the school board does not have that. We do not have that platform. And I'm speaking for myself now. When I am on a social media site, I am on there as a parent and a taxpayer who, like I was before, for those who don't know, four years before I was on the school board, I was a board of ed liaison. At which time, I came to school board meetings, spoke at my three minutes, sent tons of emails, came and spoke, Mylin would remember, I came to many meetings. And I advocated for security, I advocated for mental health, I advocated for a lot of different things, a lot of different things over the years. And I advocated for administrators, I advocated for a lot of different things. And at no time did I think that anything that went on on social media that had absolutely nothing to do with school should be brought to the school board. So I understand your dilemma if you are in a situation where you feel that you are being harassed on social media. I urge you to call the police. Suffolk will absolutely be able to guide you on what to do in the event that you are bullied, harassed as an adult, or aggravated harassment. Because that's what it is. It's a wonderful tool if used correctly. I am fine with people debating me, writing with me. But I personally, like you, have children that are on social media, and they have no reason that they should need to see their mother have to argue on my time as a parent over things that people would never say to somebody's face or say that don't even know anybody's perception of each other. There's no reason to have that. I have actually said in executive, and I'm going to say it now. This community is a wonderful community. It's filled with many different people from different walks of life. If you really want to help Konekwa, everybody says, "I want to help Konekwa. We got to do this, we got to do that." The first thing everybody has to do, and I'm included in this, everybody has to put their swords down. Everybody puts them down and says, "You know what? This is not what we should be doing." Because there may not be anything else that we have in common, nothing. We may all come from different walks of life. But the one thing we have in common is we're all here for the children. We all are supposedly fighting for the children. We are all here advocating for the children. And we don't all have to agree on how we go about that. But when we say, "We don't want our kids bullying each other. We don't want our kids doing this. We don't want our kids using foul language. We don't want our kids putting pictures up and making fun of each other." But we do it as adults to one another. Lead by example. Isn't that the only way to do something? And yes, I personally have taught my children that if you have an issue with somebody and they are going to fight back with you and use social media as their platform, block them. Then you don't have to deal with that kind of aggravation. We all have way too much negativity in our lives to deal with negativity on social media. So if you're looking for answers from the school board, you will not find them on social media. Social media is a lot of our opinions, a lot of people posting pictures, people doing things like that. Social media is good for that kind of thing. If you want an official answer, please email us. Email any one of us, email all of us, email the superintendent. That's how you get official answers. You will never get an official answer, at least not from me, on social media. You will get my opinion. I feel, in my opinion, this is, or if you want to know when something's happening, we have a play coming up, a wonderful play coming up over at OBMS. We had a wonderful play here at RMS. These are the things that we should be highlighting. That's what people should be posting all over. And I do appreciate when I look on social media and people are posting things that actually give us some feedback. Not to say that that's the only way to get feedback, because it's not. But it's a nice way to say, "Oh, look, this is, you know, a couple people here." It's kind of like a committee, which I went to the curriculum committee. And I, just so people know, because I was in the back, I wasn't being antisocial. I'm technically there just because it's open meetings. Lauren and I can be there, but you're only allowed two board members. So I could not participate, but I just wanted to be there to listen and hear what Mrs. Paffey, who did a fabulous job, by the way, wonderful job, you know, how she was running the meeting, and I think it was going very well. Anybody have anything to add for our food service? Greg?
I listened to some of the comments. So I pulled some of the menus from the different districts. Sable and Comac, and I think Hop Dog. I didn't really study them. But then I figured Sable because some woman said she worked there. And then I looked at the grilled cheese. They have it only once a month. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up, because they talked about they had it every day. And they have Pizza Network come, which I personally think is a good idea. But my question before you say that is, how many? How many of our schools, you've got to remember, a lot of our elementary schools do not have, cannot cook on-site. How many, do you know? Mr. Hauser, do you know? How many of our elementary schools cannot cook on-site? They bring the food in from the middle schools. See, I would really consider giving them a pizza day because they're bringing in stuff from the middle school. By the time it gets there, you know, it's maybe this french fry is a little soggy. It's not as good as it coming right out of your oven. So I have a concern about those four schools that don't cook on-site. So I'd really like to see that being looked into and what we can do to help those schools. and what we can do to help those schools at the elementary level. But I looked at these menus from Comac. Hamburgers, pretzels, I don't even know what a pretzel is for lunch. A WG pretzel? Whole grain pretzel for lunch? You know, that's a Savo lunch. Mozzarella sticks, hamburgers, chicken nuggets, chicken tenders, hamburgers, tacos, pizza. And then I go to Comac, who has the same company we have, are using, which by the way, that contract will be over at the end of this year, and we will be going out for a new RFP. So that's the time to think about what we, we want and what, you know, what we can put on there, if we want something different. But I looked at Comac Elementary. Cheesy stuffed breadsticks, fluffy grain waffles, meatball dunkers, classic cheese pizza, and this is the same company that does us. Fish and chips, crispy chicken sandwich, sausage egg and cheese sandwich, pasta with chicken, sauteed broccoli. It's pretty varied menu here for their elementary here. But I'm guessing they can cook on premises.
Yeah, I think people's concerns wasn't that we didn't have selection. I think that there is a selection of food. When my kids were in elementary school, and it was just a two, a year and a half ago, they, there was always a different food on a different week. Sometimes it was chicken nuggets or chicken, popcorn chicken once a week because the kids absolutely love that stuff. But I think the reality was, we got complaints like the chicken was pink. Then we, then when we spoke to people and had people telling me, "It's not pink, it's not pink, it's not pink." And then the actual distributor said, "It is pink." And I said, "Okay," so then I, it was a good thing I looked into it. And you had even said, "Change the, change the chicken." I said, "Yeah, I think that would be great. Go back to the chicken we had because apparently, if the kids are throwing it out," I mean, these are young children. Elementary and middle schoolers are not going to eat chicken that they bite into and it's pink. They're just not, and I don't blame them. You, you're not going to get that from, from young people. As a matter of fact, you're not going to get that from, from a lot of people. Uh, uh, you know, that's, so I get it that they told me it was food colorings or the way that the chicken cooks. Is that what they said? Because I?
It was white meat mixed, I can't turn them on. It was white, it was white meat mixed with dark meat, and the dark meat was usually a pure pink, is what they were told to us.
But, you know, it's a good time to look at it. Before we put the RFP out, we should think about, you know, what we, what we think that the community wants and what everyone can afford. And I'm looking at what other districts pay for their lunch as well. You know.
I think it's great that Sajem, we appreciate you guys having a discussion with Sajem and getting us a walkthrough. So we will be going to Sajem. We would like to go to other districts like the Hop Hog, even Comac, to see how theirs is different, even with the same distributor. Just because we have the same distributor doesn't mean we have the same quality food. That, we had that discussion when they were here. You can change the menu by changing a quality of a product. So that, because I'll tell you something. I did go to RMS during a book fair, and we got invited down by the chef. Remember that? And I asked, I asked, and kindly the AP brought me down there. And, and, and I actually had that sandwich, that, that chicken sandwich from, it was like the southern chicken sandwich. I couldn't believe all the kids, the, the smiles and how excited they were to have the chef there. So I am going to say that the days of the chef, which I said it then, was excellent. And I understand us requesting, I mean, I did ask them when they were here to, to have the chef come more if they could. I understand that they are short-staffed and everything. It's not the food workers. Our ConnectOne lunch ladies and all food workers are excellent. It's not their fault that the quality of food we're giving them to, to work with is, is not obviously what we need to, to get these kids to actually eat it. So, and, and to be perfectly honest, a lot of parents rely on lunch at school. I know for myself, I never make, make kids lunch with my schedule. It's just always been easier for a kid to buy lunch and they, they enjoy doing that, it was something fun to do. But if they're not going to eat it now, that's a problem.
Which I think is great, Mr. Hauser, is if we had a pictogram of what the kids have to get and what they can substitute, what they can get, like if instead of two, a vegetable and a fruit, if they can get two fruits, if they, there's a visual posted somewhere near the lunch line where they could see that and there could be less waste. Like if they don't want the vegetable but they want the extra fruit, then they could take two fruits instead. Is there something that, similar to that, that we can perhaps do? But it could be, it could be the food quality or how it's being cooked or presented.
All right, yeah, it's coming out. I think we should talk about this right before we have to do, that has to go out for an RFP. Maybe less is more.
We're not giving them that many choices and making the quality menu a little better. Yeah, well, we know they, we know they like chicken, we know that the kids eat. That was the one thing Whitson's did say to us. Whitson's did say to us when they were here. That we know when the kids eat. Like we just were saying, we know that the kids eat popcorn chicken. We know on those days, they actually have days where they run out. So if you know that that's something, maybe that's something that you try to get more often. Maybe that's like, when I was in school years ago, it was like pizza every Friday. Maybe that's something you do. Maybe we try to do, like you said, an RFP, and we try to get an RFP for like what they do, a Pizza Network, or maybe a, because I'm sure if you found one of the pizza places here in, in our community, or somebody in our community that has a connection with pizza, maybe they could bring those people forward. And they, you don't know, some places might even donate. I'm saying that it would be good to look into these other options. I just want to make sure that, that kids are not hungry. We have parents that are writing that.
So this is something I've been at for a few years. Not only do I look at the budget and the hundreds of thousands of dollars, close to millions of dollars at this point, since I've been on the board of, we've lost on the lunch. The other thing I've been asking for, and I've been facing a lot of resistance, and I keep hearing key things, and I've read a lot of the comments that the, the kids, I'm sorry, the parents have written on Facebook, they like the chef. And what I've been asking for, for the last couple of years, it doesn't seem that it's going to be able to ever happen, or maybe the capacity to do so, but to have that consortium where there's a little bit more control and ownership of what the children are eating. The quality of food that they're eating, the improved quality of food of eating, and having more of those chefs' days, probably more so times a week than what we're having now, once every month and once every two months. By joining into a consortium, you're, you're, you're cutting out the middleman as the vendor, and you're, you're producing it, and you're grabbing it, and you're buying it, and you're, and you're full ownership of your lunch program. I've been asking for that. We've spent losing millions of dollars. And again, Jackie, what you said about, "Oh, I could turn a blind eye if the kids are eating." I've said that for many years. And if anybody on this board who looks at the budget, it's me. And again, I could turn a blind eye. But I've been saying it at this mic for almost nine years now. I don't mind losing money, but now it's millions of dollars. One year, $750,000, another year, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And I keep screaming that same thing at the mic, and it's almost like, you know, keep saying the same thing, but nothing's never going to change. So I, I've asked for a consortium a couple of years ago. We had someone come in, consultant come down, and how there are other districts that are part of that consortium, and how they get their food products, and how they all sort of join in, and how the, the food products are at a reduced, a reduced cost because they're buying in bulk, because a lot of these people are on the consortium so they can get better pricing and stuff like that. I've asked for it, I'm, I'm frustrated, you know. So to have this lunch conversation, once again, I probably have had it 20, 30 times in my time of serving on the board, it's not going to change. And we've already used different vendors in the past. We switch over to another vendor. Anytime I've gone to the schools, the first thing I do is, let me go to the lunchroom, let me look in the garbage. And I'm tired of seeing containers of milk, fruit, full fruit, in the garbage. The lunch that whatever was served that day is still intact on the tray in the garbage. Vegetables, everything, so, okay, so I'm, we're losing $750,000, and I'm looking in the garbage, and we're losing a lot more. So something has to change. I am frustrated, I'm frustrated hearing everything. I'm frustrated reading the, the parents' comments because they're absolutely right. The children, they know what their children like. Let's try to, the chef day. Well, that's exactly what I'd like to bring in. A more personalized lunch menu for our children and what they're going to enjoy.
Thank you, Mylin. Does anyone have anything else before I bring up absenteeism?
No, Christina Poppy, it was a very good presentation. It was a very good presentation, it's a good start. And I don't think having that many people really affected, affected your meeting.
Thank you. I had put on the agenda, actually, I wanted to discuss this more, I think it was back in December. And I had held it off because I wanted to have the presentation by Greg Urcio. Now I'd like to discuss it. So we have an issue at ConnectOne with absenteeism. It affects our students' performance significantly. It impacts them in such a negative way in regards to them not having their teacher in. The more days you have, you know, who's supposed, who's in their classroom out, below the, the students tend to score on standardized tests or any test. And honestly, the way I, I see it is, we have to see what we can do to fix our problem here at ConnectOne. And in order to do that, we need to look at the problem. So I wanted to ask a few questions if I could. Homecoming at the high school. How many teachers called in that day? Or how many, how much absenteeism did we have that day?
So at the high school on October 7th, and I want to just remind the board that on October 10th was Columbus Day, so that was a Monday where the district was closed. So on that Friday, October 7th, at the high school, there were 49 teachers who had called in sick and absent. So as a, at the high school. As a point of reference, there are 180 teachers at the high school. So that's roughly one out of every four teachers was out at the high school.
Was any public? Anything else other than?
There was no professional development. District presented professional development. Did teachers take off, which they call a professional day, for IEP writing, for CSEs, things of that nature? I'd have to go back and look. But there was no district provided professional development on October 7th.
Thank you. The reason I, I bring up homecoming is because I, I was at homecoming and we went to the pep rally too. I, I think it was the whole board there, I want to say we all were. And, and it was disheartening, to say the least, to see so many of our staff not there sharing in the kids' moments. I mean, these children were so happy. It, it was, I love homecoming, I actually take off from work myself just so I can make homecoming, so I could be where they are to see this. And I try to do my best to video and to take pictures for the parents that aren't there for that, that portion of it. And like I said, I, I, I think it was something we need to look into because it's not just about something like homecoming and the good times and they're missing out. But when we have 49 people out in a building with less than 200, that's, that's a lot. That is absenteeism. That's a problem, and, and ConnectOne has been known for absenteeism. When is, when, when do we see the most of this at, at buildings? Is there a time normally?
So I did some, some work over the past three years now. As we all know, COVID has put a wrench into the works for a lot of things. However, the pattern still exists where it's typically the most number of absences happen on a Friday. So I will give you an example. There were, in September this year, there were 306 absences in total district-wide on a Friday, compared to the next most was 255 on Thursdays. And as a reminder, 255 on Thursdays, there were five Thursdays in the month that school was in effect. So there were four Fridays in the month. So 300, what did I say, 306 on a Friday, compared to 255 over five Thursdays is a significant difference.
Not just that, and also, doesn't this affect us getting, we're having a hard time getting in teacher aides and people to cover these classes. So absenteeism affects students. It affects, you know, people say to me, "Oh, seat time, we take a kid out for this, take a kid out for that." I said, "But what about these kids that are not getting their education because there's, they're, they're having a lapse?" Because when somebody covers a class, from my understanding, a lot of times, it's not really, they're not really being covered. They're just taking attendance, is that correct?
So class coverage certainly at the secondary levels, I think is more of a take attendance, the kids know what they have to do, they've been given an assignment, and the teacher in the classroom monitors what's happening. I do believe at the elementary level, there is more instruction going on for the teachers of those buildings.
But we are, are we having problems covering all of these absences from the absenteeism?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much for that, appreciate it. Okay, moving on to public comment. Before I say the whole thing about public comment, before I give the whole speech, is there anybody in the audience, just by a way of hands, that wants to speak about something that is on the consent agenda? Because this is only for the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, okay. I'm going to, just let me read this, and then you guys can go. I will now open the floor for the first public comment portion of the agenda. This public period is for consent agenda items only. An additional public comment period will be held later in the meeting. Please raise your hand if you have a question or comment on a consent agenda item. If there are any questions, we will continue with, oh, I'm sorry. I will call individuals forward one at a time. Please wait for my acknowledgement before stepping up to the podium. Any person wishing to address the board shall address the board president only. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and relate to school, to consent, um, agenda items only. Each person will be limited to three minutes for one or more topics. Individual employees, parents, or children should not be identified by name, title, position, grade, or building. If members of the audience speak out of turn, the board may consider a recess until order is restored. In accordance with Policy 1230, public comment will not exceed 30 minutes. If there are additional persons wishing to speak, the board may consider a motion to extend that time. So do you guys have a number for the consent agenda? Is there a number one? What number is given out by security?
But not for consent agenda.
Okay, so for consent agenda, go ahead. You, if you're, if you're for the consent agenda, just raise your hand, I'll let her go first. But you can go first. You can go next.
I, I want to address your comments about absenteeism.
That's, I apologize, that's not consent agenda items.
That's not?
No, no, that's just board discussions, you can discuss that at the next.
Okay.
Uh, comment, I apologize.
That's okay.
Consent agenda items are the, the items we're about to approve that you could have seen online?
Yes, and there were printed copies in the front.
Oh, there's printed copies in the front, she said as well. Is yours a consent agenda? Yes, you can discuss that at the next public comment. It'll be up very shortly. That's consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kristin, and I'm the parent of a Cherokee student.
In light of the recent.
In light of the recent incident at Cherokee, I have signed petitions here requesting that the security hours and schools be extended to include the before and after formal school hours. As long as those hours, as long as it's known to the district that there are staff and children still in the building. The security hours, obviously, are not discussed publicly, I understand that and why. But it is my understanding that there are longer security hours in the secondary little schools that account for the clubs and sports that are after school. When Dr. Adams titled her email, "Incident After Hours at Cherokee", and included, "Nor Were Any Students Present", it is somewhat misleading. There were students still in the building, they were in the aftercare program. We had to pick our kids up with police presence in the, in the parking lot and wonder what was going on. I'm aware of what the man said, and obviously not to be repeated in a public forum, but downplaying his threat which warranted his arrest started a slew of rumors and speculations. One thing that it did spark though, was a conversation around those kids she considered not One thing that it did spark, though, was a conversation around those kids she considered not present at the time. We realize that they weren't as protected as they were during their regular school day. I've spoken with the administrator at Scope. And while they're making adjustments that mirror the daytime protocols as best as they can within the construct of the buildings, there's still not that same level of security in place. So with that said, our petition is especially important to the younger children that don't know how to differentiate when there is an outside program caring for them within their building before or after school. They've entered the school building in the morning, they exit at the end of the day, and they should have that same level of protection afforded to them without a false sense of security during those after hours. Our children should not be cared for at their own risk. The secondary schools are provided with security for longer hours due to those sports and clubs. And while those are school-sponsored activities, one could argue that clubs and schools, clubs and sports are a form of before and after care for older age students. We ask that you please consider permanently expanding the hours of existing security that we have in place so that all the students in the Connect Watt schools can feel safe during the continuum of their day, of their school day experience. We started collecting these signatures on Thursday following the Wednesday PTA meeting. We currently have 177 right now, but we'll continue to call throughout. So I'd like to bring these up.
Yeah, if you could just, you could give it to-
You can just, can you give it to- Security?
Yes, Adam. Thank you.
And I apologize. I don't think that is a- I apologize. That actually would have been for the second comment. No, no, it's okay. In case anybody else wants to speak on that, it has to be at the second. Anybody else with a consent agenda item? Okay. Then we're going to move forward and there'll be another public comment for everybody else. Recommended action, personnel matters, instructional and non-instructional. Can I please have a motion to approve all personnel schedules as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number two. Can I please have a motion to table non-instructional personnel schedule, item number 21?
Motion.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve items two through eight? Are there any questions? Hold on. Mylan, you can go.
Why are we only doing a one-year extension on item number six?
General Municipal Law, you're only allowed to extend RFPs one year at a time.
So in order for us to get a longer contract instead of doing a yearly, is there any way that's proper to do that?
So generally, for professional service, which this is under, the district doesn't even need to go out for an RFP. You can just go for a contract. But since we did go out for an RFP a few years ago, you're only allowed to extend RFPs one year at a time. So moving forward, if the district wanted to make a contract with this organization that was more extensive, you could certainly do that, as long as it's not through the RFP process.
Okay, so then can we begin that process so we can have a little bit more sort of speed control at the length of time of having that contract?
Sure, we can start that process.
Thank you.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Items moved. All right, we're moving on to the public comments. This public comment is for all. I will now open the floor for the open public comment portion of the agenda. I'll call individuals forward one at a time. Please wait for my acknowledgement before stepping up to the podium. You should have received a numbered card from security on your way in. If you have not, please see a security guard in the back of the room. Any person wishing to address the board shall address the board president only. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and must relate to school matters only. Each person will be limited to three minutes for one or more topics. Individual employees, parents, or children should not be identified by name, title, position, grade, or building. If members of the audience speak out of turn, the board may consider a recess until order is restored. In accordance with policy 1230, public comment will not exceed 30 minutes. If there are additional persons wishing to speak, the board may consider a motion to extend the time. So number one. Do we have a number one?
Hello. Thank you so much for the presentations today and all you guys do in taking the time to be at the events and everything. I'll keep this brief. So I'm coming with a little background and two questions and two asks. So to start off the new year, we're still in the midst of lawsuits and human rights investigations because the board acted against community wishes and banned the pride flag. So then, during a Board of Education meeting this January, a mother asked an important question about the lack of diversity in staffing that raised concerns about hiring practices here in Connect Watt. So the Board of Education responded to these questions by yet again putting the burden of addressing this issue on the parent. So as we know, you know, we do have ideas, the community, that we've been sharing for years on how to perhaps address these kinds of issues. So the community knows issues around BIPOC families and students historically have been brushed to the side. And we recognize that even though the population of students seems to be, black students about 2.8%, all students need an education based in diversity, period. It's also known that people have been denied or discouraged from applying for jobs here in Connect Watt because they are open supporters of the Black Lives Matter movement. Clearly, these issues are ever-present. So we would like to know if the inquiries that have been raised on multiple occasions have been followed up on and if the board has any action plans in place to address these issues surrounding BIPOC representation as these issues continue to be brought up. And also, we ask that the board chooses inclusion and acceptance, not just tolerance, and shows that by allowing the pride flags to fly and committing, Connect Watt in some way, again, to open equitable and diverse hiring practices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number two?
Number two? Number two? Is there a number three? Number three? Number four? Is there a number four? Number five?
I was going to really go through a whole litany of things, but there's really only one that kind of stands out today. And I was talking about, I was raising my hand for Mr. Gersio, but I think he wouldn't have been able to answer this question. I worked for a bank for 37 years and never had a contract. And many, many times, I worked for someone else who had to go home on an emergency or because they were sick. And I understand in the contract currently that if someone leaves for getting sick or child emergency or something, the person who replaces them for their 44 minutes gets paid $68. And I understand that at the 11th time you do this in the year, you get a 20% premium on top of that. And we're talking about absentees and we're talking about contract. And this might be something that we want to kind of pass over to the next set of negotiations in that, that's an awfully nice perk when you think that you're all in the same association. We never had a union and when the work expanded and people had to do someone else's work, it just got done. So I think that might be something to look at. Thank you.
Number six?
Madam President, at the last board meeting, you spoke about New York State Department of Education's diversity, equity, and inclusion curriculum, and you stated you weren't for it. You did also state that you were for the words diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I don't think that a token representation at meetings covers the idea of what New York State had hoped for. The framework for diversity, equity, and inclusion goes far beyond curriculum development. It is about creating a safe, nurturing, and engaging learning environment for all students. According to New York State's Department of Education, DEI means the following. Diversity includes, but is not limited to, race, color, ethnicity, nationality, religion, socioeconomic status, veteran status, education, marital status, language, age, gender, gender expression, sexual orientation, marital, mental, or physical ability, or genetic information and learning styles. If this district is against diversity education, are we for its opposite? Equity is the guarantee of fair treatment, access, opportunity, and advancement for all, while striving to identify and eliminate barriers that have prevented full participation of all groups. If this district is against equity education, are we for its opposite? Inclusion is bringing traditionally excluded individuals and/or groups into processes, activities, and decision-making in a way that shares power and ensures equal access to opportunities and resources. If we as a district are against education, are we, this inclusion education, are we for its opposite, guys? I believe the New York State Education Department's framework for diversity, equity, and inclusion should be placed in our school district to help create a more perfect union. Thank you.
Thank you. Number seven? Number seven?
So I want to bring to light something that happened to me almost two weeks ago. I had requested a meeting with my child's teacher to discuss decline in academic performance. Upon scheduling a meeting, I stressed to guidance, who tried to have the entire team meet with me, that since my concerns were only of the one subject, it wasn't necessary for anybody else to be present except the principal and/or my child's guidance counselor. When I arrived, I found the teacher, principal, and guidance counselor in a fourth party. No one made any attempt to introduce this new person, so I had to ask who they were since I was unaware there would be anyone else in attendance. The meeting was set to be four educators and one parent, which is highly unnecessary, especially given the content of the discussion. As it was, my sister joined me. This is why I usually print these things up. As it was, my sister joined me and it was still a two-to-one ratio. After a brief introduction, we learned that this fourth party is another teacher in the building who is not affiliated with my child at all. Nor do they even teach the same grade my child is in or the subject I was there to discuss. I later learned that this other teacher's purpose was solely to be a union rep. Let it be made known to every single parent that this is highly unacceptable and a major FUPA violation. It was legal. It is also extremely inappropriate because a meeting with a parent does not constitute an investigatory, pre-disciplinary meeting, under Wain Garden Rights, which is a teacher's right to have a union representative present. Teachers are not entitled to union representation in parent meetings. Can't the presence of a union rep have the unintended effect of increasing the tension level and perhaps give the parent the wrong impression about the teacher? Can it create a sense of distrust between the parent and teacher? I learned that on social media, that I am actually not the only parent this has happened to. However, it seems to happen to the most outspoken of us, who tend to be targets of union leadership angst. It's a horrible intimidation tactic by this arrogant leadership that continues to give amazing teachers a bad reputation. We have parents here who, we heard tonight, the parents that spoke during consent agendas, who are reasonably scared for their children's lives. Instead of the union working with families to make our building safer and more secure, they waste time trying to find ways to intimidate parents like me. They do not put the community first, they do not put kids first, and they don't even put their teachers first. It's all about their pockets and grandstanding. I have to say, administration did handle the situation very well, and thank you for that. So I am asking the board to please do their due diligence to make sure that no one's other parent is targeted like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Number eight? Oh, you did? Okay. Thank you. Number nine? Number 10? Number 11? Number 12?
So a quick thing, I don't know why, but they didn't livestream the OBMS or the High School Jazz Nights. I don't know why. It really stunk because not every parent could make those and it kind of felt like those two groups were left out of the livestream. A lot of us were really kind of upset with that. Myself personally. My husband couldn't make one of it. We had a FaceTime for the whole concert. It's really weird and I just don't know why they wouldn't like include those children and all of that. That we have the technology, this is ridiculous at this point. The other thing, I just want to piggyback on the last person that spoke. The union's been doing that nonsense for years because, you know what? They did that to me eight or nine years ago. I've never had an issue with a teacher. I've never complained. I sat in a meeting, a parent, regular parent-teacher conference, just to get to know you. And I was looking around and I couldn't understand why this other random person was in the meeting. It happened to me twice. And I was actually confused for a minute because that teacher actually had one of my other kids, another time that I actually thought I was going nuts and thought I was in a meeting for the wrong kid. And I go, oh my God, I thought it was for this one. Because I do have a couple of kids. And I was like, wait a second, maybe I'm losing my mind. Come to find out, I go, why are you here? Oh, I'm a union representative. It's common that we do this. It's not common because I called the administrator after because I was furious for days after. And I knew it was because I speak up and I say stuff. And you know, it's really kind of mind-boggling because I speak up for the teachers as well. And I actually have sat down and some of those teachers in that building will know that I have gone, and Linda knows this, I have gone to central office for them to try and get stuff for their classrooms. So that was really just mind-boggling. So if we want to talk about inclusivity, let's start in those buildings with those teachers. So that really irks me to no end. And I didn't realize it. I didn't know what to do with it at that point until I read about it on social media that it's happening now. So let's just stop this and stop pretending that a sign is going to make a kid feel inclusive because I was bullied as a parent. And I am outspoken and I am not someone who will back down. I will gladly stand alone. I don't care if people stand with me if I believe in something and I encourage others to do otherwise. But that is unacceptable. And I can only imagine how many other parents were bullied. Were you in an IEP meeting? Did someone do that to you? Were you in a 504 meeting? Were you having a conference? Were you concerned? Did that happen and you didn't know what to do with it? Because I'm someone who knows what to do with a lot of stuff. And I didn't know what to do with it. And I got to tell you, I was furious about it. And when I read about it again, it reignited that because it's completely unacceptable. It was simply a meeting. There was no reason for it. It was never a complaint. My child wasn't, didn't have any behavioral issues that maybe there was a concern that there was going to be a misunderstanding. They felt like they needed representation. Because I could understand that maybe the teacher felt odd or something. There was no reason for that. Other than I could think of is the fact that I actually opened my mouth and say something when I don't think something is right. And I'm always respectful about it. And that's really something. So this has been going on for at least eight or nine years, probably longer, and it's completely unacceptable. But the union's been doing that to the parents for a long time. Be aware.
So allow me to apologize to Mrs. DiLorenzo and Mrs. Ketti. Because when that was brought to my attention just recently, we will not be allowing that to happen again. So I really wish eight years ago you would let me know because we would have stopped it. But I apologize to both of you because that should never have happened and it will not happen in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Adams. Number 13?
Good evening, everyone. I am a mom of three in this district. I've spoken up before about my son who's called the N-word in the school at a previous meeting. I watched a board meeting where the board advised a parent to talk to her building administrator to help her child, an African-American child, feel more comfortable in the schools. I was told recently that an anti- I was told recently that an anti-bullying club did not want to take on the effort of the T-Bird Project discussing the increased demographic change in New York State. In my experience this past year, since my child's first racial incident at this school district, I've reached out to the building and district administration to help me and I have not seen any progress. Nor did my child receive support from the building's social worker. When do you think parents like myself will see a change? We have no support from social workers, building and board admins, and now anti-bullying clubs. I am here to prevent and help children like my own in this district get support because they spend most of their day here. Where are children in the district, where are our children in this district supposed to feel comfortable? Can the board confirm that the T-Bird Project is a DEI committee that will help promote diversity in the schools? The board mentioned today that your job is to review policy and budget. What policies are the board creating to help students like my children? Thank you.
Thank you. Number 14?
So I have two questions. The second one is why I came tonight. I did want to address the Whitsons issue. I'm not sure whether this board is aware of the fact that around 2005, Whitson was caught giving outdated milk to every elementary school, 11 elementary schools. When we talk, it's the older ones that do. Then they were caught doing the same thing with juices. They were not invited back to do a bit. So I'm not really sure how they got back into this district. Okay. There's a great history to this, okay, with Whitsons. Having said that, I'm also not sure if they're not meeting their contractual obligations, why in fact we aren't addressing that and moving forward right away. Do you understand that? I understand that it's contractual, but if they are not meeting that contract, then why are they still here? I mean, it's basically as simple as that. This is millions upon millions of dollars. Okay, so having said that, my second thing is I've tried to get in contact with several of the board members. Completely have no idea how to do that unless, of course, you know someone who's friends with one of the board members. I left two messages with the district clerk. Nothing, okay? That's another problem. Now, my third is, my question is, this, the kids, my daughter in high school, who has a pre-existing medical condition. Now, she's a 90-plus average student. She's missed 19 days today because of her pre-existing condition. My question is, is this district policy where a class is dropped and/or they're failed essentially if they've missed more than 18 days? Is this policy, district policy, state law or federal?
Why don't you email me? And you and I will sit down and make sure that your daughter's...
I still want an answer to that question.
So it's a grading policy. There are seat time mandates by the state education department that is put into and embodied in our grading policy.
So it's district policy?
It is, but there are seat time requirements by the state education department.
Okay, I do want to, just one more minute. My daughter got COVID twice this year, okay? Which is essentially five days out mandatory each time. Then she got COGSACI, which is 10 days, okay? Right there, okay? And I know for a fact, kids are going to school sick because they don't want to fail a course and do a miss. Now with all of this going on, I can understand, but I think that there should be some sort of extension to this policy, okay? These are reaching, by the way, when you call the pediatrician, they say, don't bother coming in, you know, unless she has issues, just give her over-the-counter medicine until it passes. So...
Can you please email the superintendent and she will get back to you so you guys can work it out and see if there's something she could do for you?
Yeah, and just how do we get in touch with one of the board members? Not necessarily get back to you, you can just chat with them.
Send an email to boardofeducation@ccsdri.org. That goes to the district clerk, who then sends it to all five of us.
Well, right, what if someone doesn't want to speak with all five and wants to speak with one?
Then there, all of our emails are right on the district website. Send it to one of us and I said, something like that, we can bring to the superintendent and we can have her contact you and we can go that way.
Okay.
Okay? Our emails are all the same as the teacher's. First initial, last name, @ccsdri.org. Number 15? Number 15?
My name is Jackie. I have two students in the district. My daughter is a senior, actually. And number 14, the lady who spoke right before me, I have to say that our daughter's had the same exact situation. My daughter is an honor roll student, honor roll to high honor roll for every year that she's been in Connectbot. We love the district. But she got COVID twice this year too. And she has to go for, she does have a medical condition and she does need to leave school to go to the hospital about once every two months. It could be longer. Sometimes it happens more frequently than that. We are having an issue with attendance right now. So I hope that I would also be able to just address this with you. That's a major concern of mine. And on days that she is sick, I don't want to feel like, you know, just get up and go to school. She needs to be able to stay home. It's unfair to anybody else, it's not fair to her. But she's going off to college this coming year and she risks failing these classes now. I mean, she takes school very seriously, so that's number one. I wanted to also just mention something about the absenteeism. I know for a fact that in high school, when teachers were calling out in excess, there were sometimes situations where kids, this happened more than once. It happened at least five times, where there were students walking into an empty room. There was nobody in the room, they didn't know where to go. I was getting phone calls from my daughter while she was walking around the school. I still have, I mean, I have the history. I could tell you exactly what class and when it happened. It was in the past two years. I don't think there was a situation like that this year, but it definitely happened last year more than once. And I'm talking about the whole class didn't know where to go. And they would walk into another room and the other room didn't know where they should go. Now, Jackie spoke about social media. I agree with everything that she said. I just have a big problem with the fact that we are putting so much information out on Facebook, out on social media. I know a lot of people love it, but personally, I don't. I don't think that it's safe. It's not our platform. I think that it would be great if the school could develop some type of platform that we own. It's our place, it's our business, and we can go on there and speak about school-related activity. If somebody loses a flyer, we could post a picture of the flyer, but in a platform that's ours, not a platform that's Facebook. If somebody gets a death threat on Facebook or someone puts a picture of a student on Facebook, it's not our platform. So what the lengths that we have to go to or go through to address those issues, I just don't think it's safe, I don't think it's proper. I know it would require a lot of hard work, possibly some legal issues to get our own platform, but that's what I, I just think that it's something to strive for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You should also email the superintendent.
Yeah, I will, I will.
Or if you can't reach out, you can absolutely do the same and reach out to us.
I will, and actually, I called the school twice and they didn't call me back about this, but I will email you.
Definitely.
So let me just say to both of the parents that spoke tonight, there is a minimum that, is a seat time minimum from the state. However, what happens is toward the end of the school year, you'll get letters that say you need to appeal that your child was really ill. And honestly, 99% of the appeals give the child credit back. Sick. Gotcha. Yeah. Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I also know parents that are telling their kids, don't go to the nurse's office. I mean, I have neighbors, we talk, we meet at the bus stop. I've heard it from more than three or four parents that have said, I've told my kid, don't even go to the nurse because you're on your last, you know, your last strike. And I'm already getting these letters from the school too, that we have to appeal. And it's scary because...
We're going to definitely, it's something that we'll definitely have the superintendent look into. Definitely have a look into it. And like she said, it is true because even last year, 99% of the time, and I understand what you're saying, to your point, we are obviously, there's nothing we can do if parents send their children in and say that they're okay and they're actually, you know, that's like, unfortunately, that's been going on since, you know, since when I went to school. And I know that it isn't, you would hope that if your child's, especially with COVID now, that you would hope that if your child isn't feeling well, we try to keep them home. But like I said, sometimes you don't know until the next day when they finally are showing any kind of symptoms. So, well... No, and I understand that, but that's why I'm saying I would definitely reach out to the superintendent, let us see what she can do for you now. Unfortunately, the other issue, it's something that we're hoping as time goes by, people's immunity catches up again. I understand the situation, but there's not, we can't force parents to keep kids home. Like I said, a lot of kids may be sick and don't even know until they're at school half the day. That's something that, like I said, we would hope that parents keep their kids home if they're not feeling well, knowing that they could get sicker or get other people sick. Out of, I understand, but like I said, the superintendent will definitely be in touch with you. Can I please have...
I can't imagine how stressful it must be for a parent to get a letter like that.
I, as a matter of fact, I got one like two years ago. I didn't even know what it was because my daughter, the same thing, had COVID, was out. I didn't even know. I called up Linda and apparently it was a pre-printed letter that a lot of people get. I didn't even know.
Yeah, but it's still...
Especially you, I think I...
I've gotten them, I got them last year.
That's why I said 99% of the time, it's taken care of, but that's not the point that everyone's trying to make. All right, is everybody good? Can I please have a motion to adjourn the January 24th Board of Education meeting?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Have a good night, everybody. Get home safe.